And. Birth child was born in Sydney, I knew well. Go to Frenchtown. The town has had a reputation for academics and sports. And 2015, my family and I realized that really we did finally get to move out here. My youngest Jacob was attending Frenchtown since fourth grade. He's continuously played sports and is currently a 4.0 student enrolled in the Fast Track. Where he's gonna earn college credits while he goes to high school. Save this amount. I've been serving my country and my community since I was 18 years old. I joined Marine Corps right out of high school. After doing my active duty time there, I came back to Missoula and joined the Army National Guard. Where I took a commission and served two, three more tours of combat. I re-retired as a captain in 2012 from that. I joined the police department in 2000. And retired from that last year after 21 years. Graduated from University of Montana in 2002. And recently put on a new uniform with the sheriff's department as a special deputy. Also had to see various stuff in district, DA people. As a board member, I will be available to any student, parent, landowner, or Frenchtown resident regarding how I will vote or how I have voted. Additionally, in the future, if it appears that complaints are directed at an employee that our board may or may not retain by vote, I would make a motion to investigate those complaints by investigative panel rather than proceed with a vote based solely on a few complaints that have not been vetted as true or valid. Obviously, as a single board member, all I can do is make a motion. But even if I'm not elected, I would hope that by power of suggestion, I've influenced the board to take more clinical factual approach the next time they might end a valuable member of the Frenchtown families career. That's why I want to be a board member.
My name is Matt Walton. I moved here when I was in sixth grade and graduated from Frenchtown in 93. My wife graduated in 96 and we have two kids, a senior and a freshman. I loved everything about Frenchtown growing up. We got great times, great community. My biggest reason, I guess, for running, for me, it's not about, I mean, my kid's only got three years left. So at least kind of on the down best side is for building a future of Frenchtown, a future Bronx coming up. We're gonna experience a lot of growths coming this direction in the next few years. And I'd like to be a part of that. Help, guide us through that because it's gonna be a challenge, I think, financially and with all the people that are coming this direction. So for me, I just really enjoy Frenchtown. Really want to bring the community and school back together. You know, it's not just a place of education, it's a community center as well. Because we're not a full town, we don't have all the different options. So school is our community center.
Man, there's a lot of men up here. My name's Amanda. I am running for a four plus D position. I was born and raised in this town. I have three teenagers that have junior, freshman, and a seventh grader. I am a tax accountant, so I'm extremely busy. But I love what I do and have a lot of background in finance, accounting, and audits. I have a lot that I can bring to the table. I also have a background in working as a para prior to that. It was something that I truly enjoyed with the students that I got to work with. So I have a little bit of insight into that. I decided to run for school board for a couple of reasons. I moved my children back here to Frenchtown. It took us a little bit longer than our original plan. However, when COVID hit, I was able to see what was going on in some of these other school districts. And all I can say is that Frenchtown did an outstanding job of keeping our kids in a normal environment and working really hard to make sure that they got back to school and learning and keeping them on track. So my goal as school board trustee is just to give them the best possible outcome for a normal education. I have three key points that I wholeheartedly believe in. And it's curriculum transparency, empowering the parents to have a voice within the community and have open conversations with board members to let them know that their voices are heard. And just innovative opportunities. We have some great things happening here at Frenchtown right now for our Bronx. And I would like to see those keep expanding as was discussed. We are expanding at the seams right now. So I just would like to be available to see those innovative processes come to fruition in Frenchtown. As a mom, I'm always pushing my kids to be the best they can be. Whether that's in academics, sports, or being just a responsible part of society. You can expect nothing less from me. Thank you.
Boston dogs. My name is Gordon Schmel. I'm currently co-chair for school board right now. I've been on the school board for three years. This will be my third year. On my third year, I was asked to be a co-chair. Little background only. I was pretty much one of the race chair in Frenchtown. I graduated here one year past Mac in 94. I have, I have two boys in school here. One's a freshman, one's a senior. And a stepdaughter who graduated last year is now a great Paulston college. I think I, I think I bring a lot to the table as a board member for a lot of things. One, I'm used to volunteering. I volunteered as a fire department, in the fire department while I was here in Frenchtown, right in high school, all the way through 2000. I began my law enforcement career in 2000. And unfortunately, due to an accident, I was taken out of my career in 2018. But what I've done for three years here, the decisions that I've helped made, and I can't say I, the board, that we do everything together, we make decisions together. We've kept the school going during the pandemic. We've given the teachers, administrators, the public, the ability to continue and have the quality of education that the kids have now. I helped put together a three-year strategy plan. And so I, I'm not sure we'll get to it as, as time goes on. There's a lot to this. And I think I bring a lot to the table for this school, for this community.
I'd like to give a round of applause to all of the candidates. Now I'm gonna go ahead and begin asking some questions. I have six questions for each of the candidates to answer. And we'll go in the same order in which you guys did your introductions. This time now, you have three minutes. Proceed once again, we'll be giving time cues. So again, end with one minute and then this is wrap up your final thought. And for the sake of time, let's just make sure that we're paying attention to those time cues. I know that everybody has a lot to say, but at the same time, you know, by the time we have six questions with six people asking or answering each of those questions, it does take up a lot of time. So if we keep things moving, that would be great. And then the first question that I have, if you guys need me to ask the question again, I'm more than welcome to do so. But the first question is, and we're gonna go ahead and start with Rainier, is a board member has to make some difficult decisions such as deciding on recommendations for the expulsion of students, termination of employees, salaries, and litigations, for example. So how would your colleagues describe your leadership style under pressure?
Well. I, I would say that in the past, working previous jobs, I'm currently self-employed, so my boss is a pretty good guy, I'd say. But in the, in the past, I've always been asked to take a leadership role, whether I wanted to or not. Was standing in high school, being voted as captain. And in my senior year, I didn't want to be captain at the end. I just wanted to, I just wanted to go and let somebody else do it. But it didn't work that way. I've been a foreman of a construction crew and had to make those calls. Guys didn't show up for, for work and I had to let them go. There's, there's a proper way to do it and challenges you gotta go through. And I feel like I've always done a good job of handling it properly. Never have I had an employee be able to come back because it was handled incorrectly. It's not something I enjoyed doing, but I know I had to do it. And the responsibility that was, was always taken serious. But I felt that my employer was confident that I would do what I needed to do. So the expulsion of a student versus firing somebody is, is a whole other thing. Because that's the rest of their life. A teacher, a staff member can get another job. We definitely wouldn't wanna have to deal with that necessarily, but it's gonna come up. A student, I mean, you're making a decision, it can affect their life forever. So that's something that weighed heavy on me, but I accept the responsibility of that and weigh it out as best I could with the information I have.
The question. So a board member has to make some difficult decisions such as deciding on recommendations for the expulsion of students, termination of employees, salaries, and litigations, all for example. How would your colleagues describe your leadership style under pressure?
Okay, well, this is my day-to-day job. So I, I manage, I have 50 people in my organization today. I manage a healthcare software organization. I manage four managers that manage employees. So these are things that I've, I've done on, on a regular basis, right? I think it's a little bit different. When you look at leadership qualities in this regard, I think you have to take all of these things with some context and nuance. It's hard to talk about things like terminating employees or, or expulsion of a student without kind of knowing the context and nuance around why they would be in that situation. However, I, I tell my managers that work for me at work all the time that anytime you have to terminate an employee, it should never be a surprise, right? We should have had many conversations around their performance and what was going on with them prior to ever getting to that point in time, right? There should be a lot of times that we try to correct these things. We try to coach people to make them better throughout the process. So when we get to a point where we have to terminate an employee, that should never be a surprise, right? It should be something that we've had multiple conversations. Around a student, I think, you know, becomes, you know, trying to look at what, what sort of context and when, when a student would be, you know, removed from school. I mean, I would assume it would be very serious, but I think you just have to look at every situation individually and have those conversations. I think the biggest thing that I would say is you have to go into all of these conversations without a personal agenda, right? You can't look at this like you have anything to gain or lose from this situation, but you have to look at the facts and look, look at what's going on in that individual circumstance, whether it's with an employer or it's with a student. You can't have an agenda and what you're trying to accomplish by, by their termination or by the expulsion of that student. And I would look at that as, as, you know, as every specific instance I might do. Thank you.
So the last question is, how would your colleagues describe your leadership style under pressure?
Okay, so promotion to corporal, lieutenant school, combat, captain's career course down at Fort Knox, street leader for Missoula Police Department for many years. I've got some leadership experience. When I retired from the military, I was in charge of the largest company in any infantry battalion, which is HACC, of 228 people. As far as my leadership style goes, almost anybody who knows me would tell you that it's more my life philosophy than anything else. It's by example. Sorry, by example. So the, the teachers of this school are the professional teachers. We all teach everybody around us all the time. We, we're all educators and that can be a good thing or a bad thing. But they're going to look at you, your peers, the people older than you and younger than you. And they're gonna judge as to whether they wanna be like you or if they wanna make decisions like that or if they wanna have that same life philosophy. So as far as making those hard decisions, I've made probably what most would consider tougher decisions on things people's lives over the years. But the main, the main focus is to make sure you have as much of the facts as possible before you make a decision. Definitely try not to make any decision based on emotion or if you have some attachment to that. Gather the facts, weigh the facts, make an appropriate decision. And teach, of all things, teach. Make, make sure that if you're punishing a person, whether it be a student or a faculty member, make sure that they have the opportunity to learn something from it. We never learn much of anything from our wins. Just like I teach my kids and always have, you're, you're gonna learn a lot from your losses. And if you, if you're not learning from them, you're not, you're not reflecting on them. And maybe you're not being punished in a, in a way that is beneficial to that. So that's my leadership style.
So I guess my leadership style would be, I mean, I've run, I own a business for 15 years now. I own and operated other businesses and sold them. My leadership style, I would say, by, by colleagues and by example. I mean, I don't sit in the office, I get in there, get whatever it takes to get it done, get the job done. Move on. It's never making, never fun making decisions about somebody's life or a kid, how a kid's getting, getting the decision to be handled. But hard decisions usually end up making for better schools, better businesses, whatever, I mean, all the way around, hard decisions end up making for a better choice, I think. And so that's, that's a leadership mindset.
Sure, I do have your question here. A board member has to make some difficult decisions such as deciding on recommendations for the expulsion of students, termination of employees, salaries, and litigations, for example. How would your colleagues describe your leadership style under pressure?
My colleagues would probably describe me as a little better under pressure. I kind of always have. I kind of thrive in that environment. As far as making those hard decisions on whether to fire somebody, it would come down to what is in the best interest of the students? And why are we at this point? It would be looking at all of the information, all of the community feedback. And it would just have to be setting aside your own personal emotions regarding that situation. As far as a student goes, I do feel like they are under constant scrutiny on a daily basis. They're always being, they're always being watched. We're in a day and age where there's no secrets. And especially in, in a small town, there's no secrets. So I do think that there are opportunities here to teach and correct. But I also feel at the end of the day, what is in the best interest of the majority of students.
Well, I'll start out with the leadership portion of it. Most everything I've done, I've held some kind of leadership position. So it was being in the volunteer fire department. I came out as a captain in insurance fire. I came out as a sergeant. That guy up there. I would say sergeant. Anyway. And now on the council, I've been asked to be a co-chair. I don't take that lightly. There's a lot of decisions to make being a co-chair and being a trustee period. In the three years I've been here, I've had to do disciplinary actions, rehires, hires, a ton of things. And I'm telling you, it's not one person's vote, it is the board's vote. And I've been in a lot of situations where you had to sit back and look outside the box. And when what not only is being told by other people, what information will be, but you're listening to people in the community as well. And they have, they have a voice and that voice needs to be heard as well. I think someone who jumps right in, I guess my colleagues would tell you, I'm not all those people who jump right in and read the opinion or, or give you an ultimate answer. I like to give feedback. That idea is just too fast, it's human impossible to make that sound decision. Because sometimes making that decision is gonna be a hard one. And that hard one, people aren't gonna like sometimes. But there's a lot of decisions that we make that continue lessons, education. We try to support the administrative teachers to continue the higher education that we ask, that, that we expect first time to teach our kids. I, I, you know, I, the law enforcement side of it, I don't make decisions on hundreds of thousands of dollars to keep this school, keep our kids in the community safe in this facility. I, I would say my colleagues would say that this guy, he sits back, he takes in all the information, he makes a strong decision. And that's why I believe I became a co-chair of the board.
So again, three minutes for each question. You obviously don't have to use the entire time, but just keep an eye on the scene. If you feel like you're running out of time. So the question, the second question is, is what areas do you feel the district is doing well? And what areas do you see it need for improvement?
The areas that I see the district doing well is the education here is still top-notch. One of the reasons why my wife and I wanted to move back here is because of that. I always heard that it was the best education in the state and I still believe it is. Some of the areas that I think that we need to work on around here for sure is the structures. The, the school over on the other, the other campus. I mean, we have fourth and fifth graders in the campus that I went to junior high and they're, they're getting order. I think that one thing that we need to do is, is reach out to the community a little bit more. We've got community members here that are more than happy to help. I'm, I know several of them, I'm one of them. There's, there's ways that we need to bridge that gap. I think, you know, if we can't figure out ways to get more community involvement and not put quite so much burden on the school itself. There's, there's ways to supplement some of that, I believe, rather than just going straight to ever seeing a taxpayer. I would like to see that and bring more of that community closeness that we used, I shouldn't say we used to have, we still have that, but let's bring it back a little bit stronger. Trying to get some of the facilities cleaned up and, and survive all we can until we can get a new school built. That's something that is obviously gonna have to come down, down the pipe eventually with the amount of hate deals and, and whatnot that are being turned into houses.
Thank you so much, Jeff.
Yeah, so I think the, the, the good, right? There, there's so much good. I think the education, athletics, the administration, the people that are leading, you know, whether it's the elementary school or intermediate, middle school or high school. I think, I think we have a great superintendent. I think we have people that, that run maintenance and drive our buses and these people, right? The people that make things go, the teachers, the staff. I think we have great people. There are areas for improvement. Rainier talked about, you know, maintenance, things with the buildings. I think all of that will probably be discussed by anybody that's walked toward the campus that we have. I think the, the thing that we have that's broken, more than anything, is the culture. I'll, I'll continue to talk about this. I feel like when I have seen interactions between people who interact with the board on a regular basis, there is mistrust. There are teachers that I've spoken to that do not feel valued. They don't feel like they're paid any equal to Missoula County. They don't feel like their voices are heard. They don't feel like they can give an honest answer to the people that they report to that drive the vision for the direction of this school district. And I think it starts with culture. I think we have to build a culture of positivity where everybody feels comfortable to have a conversation and to be vulnerable in those so that we can get to the bottom of what's actually going on and understand the real issues so that we can work to try to resolve those things. And that's what I think is the number one biggest issue that I see and that I want to.
Sure. So the question is, is what areas do you feel the district is doing well? And in what areas do you see need improvement?
So doing well, I think, you know, coming from Missoula, I'm a little bit of an outsider and I have a little bit of a high view of, of Frenchtown coming out here. And I, I, I think that it's always lived up to that. I think that across the state and even outside the borders of our state, they look to, to Frenchtown for academics and sports. Just, it's just the way it always has been and I think it continues. I think as boards, as a board, what we can do to improve is again, education. If we're voting on a mill levy, it can't just be a, a matter of, well, this is just another tax. And just like our points of view change, before I was a parent, I probably didn't vote for a single tax hike ever. But as a parent, I've always voted for the school levies because I, I understand that that is part of our future. That's the only thing that's gonna keep our community, our country, our state alive is making sure that our, our children have the education that they need and they have everything that we can provide for them in that manner. As far as what the district can do, I, I, I don't see any major flaws where, where improvement is needed. Like I said, I think everybody else in the state wants to this community as the standard tool of life.
The question for, it must be in three. In what areas do you feel the district is doing well and in what areas do you see it need improvement?
I don't really think, I think we're doing a great job in everything. I think we're starting to improve on stuff and we're looking for the future and being ready for anything that's coming our way. Not reacting to what's, not reacting to situations, but to be looking forward down the road and see what's coming. I mean, I love Frenchtown, I mean, we have great education, great athletics. I mean, it's why I live here, why I grew, why I grew up here. I mean, it's why I wanted my kids to go to school here. I like Rainier, the community involvement, I think, would be great. And there's, you know, it's the communication that's there as far as different things that the community can, can do to help relieve stress, whether it's financially or, you know, staff-wise as far as taking care of little projects versus having the school have to pay more than I think we should. You know, staff wise as far as taking care of little projects versus having the school have to pay more than I think we should. Yeah, communications would be there so it can get handled because I know people in the community will step up and help.
So I think that probably one of my. Things that I have just been super impressed with since being back in Frenchtown. Is the communication, the communication between the teachers and the parents, the communication between the administration and the parents. Um, I really love being back to this hometown feel and having that open communication. That's something I was super impressed with. Um, especially coming from a town that did not have that. So the other thing that I've been super impressed with is the education. When we moved back here, my son was double dosed in a. In a class, the same class, all day, every day, he got to take two core classes. Um, Frenchtown was more than willing to go above and beyond to correct and rectify and get him to where he needed to be. Um, that was something that just super impressed me. Um, the lengths they were willing to go to get him to where he needed to be to graduate. Something that I personally see that we need to work on is we have a lot of job openings right now. We can't fill them. And then that means that we're falling short on our students. We're falling short on bus routes, we're falling short on carers, we're falling short on substitutes. So I just think, and I don't get me wrong, I know that this is an issue everywhere where we can't find help. Um, but the average salary for a Frenchtown teacher, and this is just an average, is about forty six thousand. The average salary of a Missoula teacher is anywhere from fifty two to fifty five thousand. The average home price in Frenchtown is six hundred and fifty one thousand. An average home price in Missoula County and Missoula City alone is five hundred and forty two thousand. Um, I think the biggest thing that has been expressed to me at times is that our teachers are not being paid for the value that they bring. Um, so that's something that I feel like as a community, we need to hear, something that I feel like it's a school board we need to hear and we need to rectify to keep these. Teachers that are here that are valuable in Frenchtown.
Yes. So the question is, in what areas do you feel the district is doing well and in what areas do you see it need improvement?
I'm like Matt, I, I think there isn't anything that we haven't done well. The education department, top of the line here compared to what's going on in Missoula. Our facilities, yes, we have a soft campus. It is old, it needs some patching up. And if you ask me, we're eight, we're quite eight years behind on a new facility and that's being talked about right now as we speak. Those are things that are big, deep pockets to deal with down the road. Those aren't just community members. Coming forward and helping out and all this and all that. But with that said, the good thing is the education we have here, the teachers we have here. I, I think the disconnect, if there is, if there's anything bad about it, it's look in this room, half these seats. Two thirds of these seats are empty. Why are we not having more people involved in this and how, how is it we can get help to the public and. Talk to them and tell them what it is the school, why it's important that you hear in the school and you hear what's going on. Talk to the teachers, talk to the students, talk to the school board members. We're here to listen. We put together a three year strategy plan and one of those strategies in there is to. How do we figure out to get community more involved in this? Newsletters, billboards. I don't have an answer for that. And that's something that us as trustees have to come together in order to have to talk about that. We talk about the uh transparencies and mill levies and stuff like that, well. You know, understand how a mill levy works. Understand where that money comes from and and understand. What it goes to. And when we get more people coming into this community, understand that that money goes down per house. It's, it's not just one big one. You're going to pay eighty dollars a year on a two hundred thousand dollar house. Who in Frenchtown has a two hundred thousand dollar house? They don't. But it gets smaller as people come in more. And that goes towards. The general budget, the general fund for us to. Help maintain what it is we're trying to do to make things great for our students. That's what we're here for, for our students. I, I would say that there's anything that's what we need to do is have that connect with our community. And to fill the seats so that they can be here and listen to us and. Ask questions. Hope you heard that question.
And that actually brings us to the next question, also on the mail-in ballot, an operational mill levy, the first requested in the school district in fourteen years. So what are your thoughts on the request of this operational mill levy and its uses to support staffing needs, retaining student programs and teacher-student ratios? And fund services and utilities? Right here?
Well, anybody that knows me would know that when it comes to taxes, I'm the first one to cringe and not want to add any more taxes. But when it comes to the, the school. I, I feel like we need some, some voices out there, some ambassadors to try to push to, to add a mill levy, approve this mill levy. We have. Five bus routes, I think, that we're, we're down. We have facilities that that need repairs and. And, and staff that, that I, that really needs. Needs to be paid for what they do. I understand how the mill levy works to a certain extent. As far as the, the, they had a tax to us. I've been trying to read through this stuff and, and figure out exactly what it does to your taxes. In, in my taxes as well. Personally, I agree that it's money well spent. If it goes to the district to help with staffing issues with facility, maintenance and repairs. Building a school down the road, that's, that's probably going to be a bond thing and, and a whole other issue, but. I personally would push for a mill levy as a, as a board member or not a board member. Whether I'm elected or not, I will, I will push for it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, I'm in total support of the mill levy. Uh, I think when you, I happened to attend. March fifteenth board meeting, we got a chance to listen to, to Les and the board discuss the levy. You know, there was discussions around staffing needs. Clearly, we've, we've all kind of talked about the growth in Frenchtown and what that means. And I think with, you know, with added students becomes added staff. We've already had conversations about. Uh, underpayment from Frenchtown teachers to Missoula, uh, Missoula public schools. So I, I think you have. You know, you have growth, student growth, you have staff salaries, you have benefits, you have increases in utility costs. You know, we're clearly in, in, in the land of inflation right now, so all that stuff impacts everybody all the way down to the school board. So. I think we, we, we clearly need some of these things in order to grow, in order to bring in the right teachers. Uh, more importantly, I think, to retain the great people that we have that work with, with our students. Uh, and with our administrators at, at the schools. And I think that's, you know, probably first and foremost. And, and I think, you know, I had the opportunity here last run through everything and this discussion with the board. Part, part of the role of being a school board trustee is to hire good people that you trust to do a job. Uh, I think, you know, Les is, you know, a great, a great superintendent in that regard. And I think when he ran through and asked that, that he supported. The mill levy and ran through those reasons that I think, like, from, from my standpoint. You know, that's why you put somebody like that in that position is to make, to be the CEO and be able to make those decisions and, and, and I support it because of that.
So, yeah, I got to sit in on the last, which was a very long board meeting last month. That was, I was, I was second guessing whether I was going to be on the ballot after that one, by the way. But it taught me so much about. The mill levy, the fact that we haven't had a mill levy, that we, the last one ran out, like, two years ago, three years ago, something like that. So we, we've been living at. As, as landowners here, we, we've been living the big life, not having to pay some of those mills. The last couple of years, but now it's time to start to pay, uh, pay for the catch up. And. It comes down to choices. I think this is not where we want to sprint. We want to make sure that we are always what the rest of the state looks to for education. And to do that, we're going to have to have good people and we're going to have to pay them. And we're going to have to have facilities that are appropriate for our children. As an ambassador. To the people, if, if, you know, many, obviously two of those up here are going to be loaded in. I think it's one of your responsibilities to make sure that. Anybody who asks a question gets your honest opinion. This is why we need this. And conversely, you know, if, if, if we are paying, and we are paying too many taxes, we should probably talk to our county commissioners. About some things that are of less priority than our own children. And bring those down to, to ease the burden. But this is not where we need to sprint. And I think that. We should all have that conversation as to where we think our priorities should be when it comes to our money.
Would you like me to repeat the question?
Uh, no, I definitely support the mill levy. Uh, my only thought is, is enough. Five hundred thousand seems like a lot of money to build this many people and things that everything's like. And obviously the administration toes up a number that we. That we want to be past, but is it enough looking forward down the road? Are we going to be needing to do it again? Or can we do it all in one shot to try and get a little more to cover our bases for the future? I don't want to just do it once and then skip through again and then, okay, now we've got to do it again, try to skip through, I'd rather try and project a little further out and. And maybe that's what they did and I honestly don't know maybe if that's what they did and that's where the number they came up with, but. I'm always supporting the mill levies, anything to support the school, whatever the school wants.
I'm going to actually second a little bit of what Matt said. I do have some concerns that it's not enough. Um, especially when you look at our costs that have already inflated at this point in time. The utility costs are up thirty percent, maintenance is up thirty five percent. Our liability insurance is down at sixty one percent. Um, so it does leave me a little bit concerned that it's not enough. And when it comes to our kids, what aren't we willing to do to give them the best possible life, the best possible education? Um, and so I just, I strongly. Also kind of agree with Rainier here. I'm the last one that wants to volunteer for more tax. But at the same time, it's what's in the best interest of our kids and growing and. Expanding our community just a little bit more. Um, it is expanding at a rapid rate. So I would like to see, you know. Hopefully it go a little bit further.
Okay, obviously. Uh, being on board for three years, I'm, I'm aware of a lot. And. You guys fall asleep after I talk about it for about two hours of how this, how this goes about. But a lot of people don't know that the state gives us eight percent of the funding that we get. We're running on a budget of ten, ten million, ten point two million dollars right now. The other percentage, nineteen percent is through a mill levy that, or through mill levies that we offer. And so how, how that was came, how that comes about is, you know, already is a four ballot. And we could ask up to a hundred percent of what that is and that's it, a whole one point of one million dollars. We thought that would be silly to come right out and say we want one point of one million dollars. That's it. Without any capabilities of what it's going to or anything like that, to you, the taxpayer, I just show up one point of one million dollars. That would seem silly. We want to put something behind that. Five hundred and thirty six thousand dollars to help us with the general budget of the school. That's going to help us. Just as she said, uh, the, the insurance is great, right? The, we, we're short, we're short staff and. Need raises, we need to find incentives to get parents to come out here to help us. Bus drivers. The cost of living is down through the roof and we all are living that. Look at transportation costs, look at food. Just day-to-day basis is that we're going on here. So. Right now, we're working on a max, uh, we're about ninety one percent of the budget we're working on. And the Missoula schools, they're working at a hundred percent of that. That doesn't give them any latitude to. For instance, we had to make. A decision on shop clocks and stuff that are being pushed on us now to come up with money. And we had a board meeting Monday to spend just about fifty thousand dollars. On shop clocks and orders. I don't know what Missoula County would have done. So I'm not sure they would have had the money to do that. So. The reason for the mill levy is to help us with the general budget. It's to help us to maintain and to keep the facilities going here. And then I think it's us to be able to work down the road. Okay, what more do you need? What more can we do to sustain? What it is we have going here in our district.
This is wrong doing these questions. This is question number four. And some of you have answered this already, but we're just going to go ahead and relate it right down to this one question is what changes would you like to make while serving on the board? Right here?
That's a. Broad question, I guess. I don't necessarily have an agenda to, to change in the record. If I. I see the call in general, I would put in my wish list to do to bring the FFA program in Frenchtown. If that's possible, to try and push that. Uh, whether I have that power as a board member or not, I don't know. But. Other than that, changes, I, I would like to see. The, the pay increase, I really would for. The classified staff, the, the management staff, the, the teachers. To ensure that we have good quality education. And, and we have the, the facilities maintained to, to properly do that. My daughter, I don't know if she was exactly, I wish I almost went a pass there because it announced that the toilets wouldn't flush properly in her bathroom. So that's, and that's not, I mean, that's the management department, they have their hands full and they're, they're working on that. I, I know that. There's, there's issues that are being banded right now, trying to make the funds that we have. Work and the management department is, they're staying. To those are some of the areas that I, I would like to change to make sure that everybody has what they need, the tools that they need to operate from, from the ground up. Uh, kitchen staff, bus drivers, maintenance, teachers. Those are the changes that I would push for.
Yeah, the biggest thing that I would like to change is a, a complete mindset shift, right? I talked a little bit earlier about culture and being vulnerable and eliminating mistrust. That you should hire the. Um, that, you should hire the, the, the right people, have faith in that and they can do a job and those sorts of things. Um, but I think it's more than that, right? And I think there was even some, some talk down here about, um, community involvement. I had the opportunity to, to hear a speech at one of the board meetings from the administration talking about, uh, how excited, uh, exciting it was to send the fourth and fifth graders to play a basketball game at the Adam Center. And that, um, none of the kids knew the fight song and that, um, uh, a lot of times when you attend basketball games, uh, it's, it's not hard finding a seat, right? So, some of these things that, that I think, um, when you look at, you know, whether it's, whether it's finding people to fill the positions. I know, for example, I have three friends that I played, uh, played with in high school that are all football coaches in the state of Montana. And I've talked to every one of those three about coming to Frenchtown. And they all told me that they wouldn't touch Frenchtown School District for the Tampa poll. Um, and I think that that has a lot to do with culture. Uh, I think that getting the right teachers in that fit into our culture in Frenchtown that, I mean, it just comes down to this for me, right? When I talk about culture and a mindset shift and, and doing these things, if, if having people that are heavily influencing our kids every single day do not feel valued to come to work, then are they going to excel at delivering that education to your kids? Right? Are they gonna do the, the best job that they could, right? I mean, I've worked in bad, in bad jobs in my life, right? And you'll come to a job that you're underpaid at if you love your job. You won't. When you're, when you don't love your job and you're underpaid, you won't, and if you do, you mail it in, right? And I think that all of this culture, all of this starts, um, you know, from the top, right? The board establishes the vision that we have an impact to make this. Uh, bringing some community pride, it's wrong pride and make sure that everybody, when we do something like this, that, that, you know, the seats are filled for this and they're filled for a basketball game and and so on and on, giving that, hey, wrap it up, which is probably the fourth time I've got that. So, um, that's my take, thanks.
Completely agree. People don't quit jobs, they quit bosses, so. Yeah, if you don't feel appreciated, you're not gonna, you're not gonna stick around, no matter how much you're being paid. So that's definitely a priority. I would say that, uh, if, if we're gonna look at improvement and just, like I said, is my life philosophy, I try to self-reflect first, you know, what could I improve about myself, about the way I do things, well, become more involved and educate the people around you. The last, what, three or four meetings that I've come to, I've learned just tons of things that I had no idea about. Uh, all because an issue came up and I decided I wanted to figure out what it was and so one thing led to another, but, but I think as board members, we have an opportunity to simply talk to the people who we represent and make sure that they understand our sake and, and why we did the, the things we did or, or didn't do. And make sure that there is that transparency there, I think, I think communication is the first step in, in that direction.
Matt, I can go ahead and repeat the question quickly is what changes would you like to make while serving on the board?
I don't know that I necessarily want to make changes per se. I have any specific reason for doing this other than wanting to better to give our kids the best environment and to have community involvement as much as possible. I think first of all, everything we do is pretty good, obviously, pay is a huge issue, especially right now with inflation and everything. We're obviously confining the budget that, you know, we have to work around, everybody has to work around. So, obviously, everybody wants to be as underpaid, figure out how we do it, but um, that, that's always a challenge with every, every job and every business is where it's better to fund, so. But ultimately, I think we're doing a job, I just, uh, like I said, want to just be part of the process going forward and keep it going forward and look to the future and be the one that expresses pressure, the pressure of the staff, administration, hopefully the kids. And all that probably seems to be fair.
Uh, so same thing, I, I really don't have anything that I personally think is screaming that needs to be changed. I personally started this endeavor, endeavor because I started going to other school districts for meetings. Um, I started reading their minutes, I started looking at the problems. Um, and so going to Frenchtown School Board meetings, the biggest thing that I could say was that there was no community involvement at those meetings. Uh, so that is something that I would love to see changed. If you have questions, if you have concerns, if you wanna see changes, like you have a voice. Um, and you need to use it. Um, that's part of the reason that I'm taking the stand that I am here is because I am the voice for my kids and the kids that are, they are grown up with. Um, as far as um, any other changes, what I really would like to see happen with Frenchtown is I would like to see it stay the same. And I know that sounds silly, but with all of the changes that are happening in these bigger outlined schools, um, I kind of just want to protect it, I want to keep it what made it great. I want to keep it how, um, some of the teachers that have retired, um, that we all grew up with, I want to keep that same small town feel alive right now. Um, so that's kind of my angle is I just really want to preserve what made Frenchtown so great. Uh, I want to see the community involvement more, I want you to be open to coming up and having those conversations, whether it's at basketball or football or wherever, if you have concerns, we need to know about it and your voice needs to be heard.
Brian?
Cheating with a finger. I'm saying, I, I don't, I don't see, uh, that there are need to be any changes. I would, well, when I'd ask is more communication. I think that's, um, from, from passport that I have, I've worked with, uh, when you work with ranks, uh, you know, if, if you talk about board members to superintendents, to administrators, to teachers, to stuff, we're talking about it a lot in these, trying to come together in, in, in one pot. And it's like the poetry, you don't tell one person anything and, and it changes and it goes on. But there's a link, there's a link missing there and I, I think there's a communication thing, if there's anything that needs to be changed, it's communication. It baffles me that, um, my opponents tell me that, uh, teachers are walking on pins and needles and and, uh, they're, they have these concerns and all this stuff. I've been on the board for two years and I've yet had a teacher come up to me and say, uh, we have a lot of problems here. I haven't had that, I haven't heard that. I, I grew up in this community, I've been here for a while. And I just simply have not heard that. Now, are there maybe some question of whether or not they're not getting paid enough? I mean, we're losing teachers or parents because we can't pay them enough. Uh, the, the, the cost of fuel to come to Frenchtown to teach is astronomical. And I get it, you invited to the Zulu, why would you not? So, if there are questions out there, if there's comments out there, we as board members are your representatives, your voice for you when it comes down to any agenda uh, that's put out for any one of you guys to look at on a website. We have an agenda, a board agenda. And, and usually they're about a hundred and eighty pages long. We have to read them and then we have discussions and just as Chris said, we're there for five hours talking about it. Last year, I think there was over fifty meetings. I'm on, I believe, four committees and that's how I'm committed, I'm committed to this school, I'm committed to the students one hundred percent. And I try to get on as many committees I can so that I have a voice for you people here. For this community and for our students one hundred percent.
Next question is, is what ideas do you have to support Frenchtown School District's strategic plan?
Well, that's a tough question, uh, to be honest with you, I don't exactly understand, uh, the, the strategic plan. I, I would say that, um, new involvement, listening to the staff, to the administration. That's, uh, you know, honestly, that's an area that I need to really up on and, and to have what our strategy is and, and, and we pull together.
I looked at it today, it's like fifty-eight pages long, I think, so, um, it was, um, it was a lot to take, especially in like two hours between my normal job and getting here, but, um, if I remember right, I think it was, it was set up from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three. Um, obviously, we experienced a lot of stuff in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, so I, I would imagine there's probably a lot of stuff up in there that's, that's still relevant and some that, that have probably changed quite a bit. Um, there tended to be a lot of things in there that, that really established the vision and what we were trying to do around, um, putting students first, around increasing education, around infrastructure, um, around, uh, technology advancements, um, updating infrastructure and maintenance and those sorts of things. And I think, like, a lot of what we talked about today that almost has come up in, in, uh, in a lot of these conversations from, from all six of the panelists. You know, I mean, I think we've, we've already kind of had a lot of those conversations around supporting those things. You know, I mean, I think the number one, um, job in the board, um, when you're looking at the strategic plan is to, you know, maximize the education for every student, uh, per the tax dollars provided. And I think when I read through and looked at a lot of, of that vision, I think like, you know, we looked at advanced technologies around infrastructure and maintenance, increasing, um, uh, improvements to the schools um, from an infrastructure standpoint, and I think a lot of those things were, were done, you know, a little bit to, to Ryan here's point, I think fifty-eight pages was a lot to get through in a day. Uh, that probably took them, I would assume, uh, according to his thoughts, a lot, a lot of meetings to probably build and put that together. Um, and, uh, and a lot of, uh, less in the administration, uh, to, to work on as well. So, I, I mean, I would support all the things that, that we've, you know, we've kind of already talked about today with infrastructure and, and technology advancements and all those sorts of things in relation to the, to the strategic vision. But then I would, you know, I would, I would assume, given COVID and all these things that just happened in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one with inflation and things like that, we should probably take a look at some of those things and see how they would be impacted, uh, for the future.
I've only gotten a finger a couple of times, but it's the wrong finger, I'm a cop, I didn't understand a little bit, but, um, I think the strategic plan did, uh, take a hit as far as you plan one thing and then COVID happens, so. I think our biggest job as parents, as community members and certainly as board members is to support the staff here that was able to continue on and give our kids in a, in a nation that largely wanted to abandon their children. We continued on and our kids got the education that many parts of this country didn't get. And I think that's what, I think that's what it takes to be flexible and to, uh, trust your administration to do the things that they do based on our common values. That's the biggest thing, just to trust the people that do the job, understand and read it. And, and if you have suggestions, certain ones are concerned very much, but we have to support the people that are continuing to, uh, make our children some of the best in the nation at this time, over the last two years.
Question once again is what ideas do you have to support Frenchtown School District's strategic plan?
Well, I'm afraid I have to check through, read through it either. As far as supporting any plan for the future is just like I mentioned before, is that we're taking a forward-looking position, so when we have issues come up, then we're ready for them rather than just reacting to it, but, you know, three years, five years, eight years down the road, if we're looking far enough, I mean, this place is gonna blow up in the next, I mean, five, ten years, it's gonna be crazy out here. Like I said, trying to keep this what it was when we grew up here, um, as much as possible and support any support we can give along those lines is, um, but except having a chance to read on with them, so.
Um, I was actually really pleasantly surprised by the strategic plan that was first put in place about, about how hard our board and our administration worked to get our kids back tomorrow. Um, there is a part in this plan that comes out and helps our students who kind of go behind during all of this. And it works, giving them the extra help that they need to get caught back up. It talks about improvements on buildings, um, we had a few grants in there, the Esser Grants and then the ARC Grant that kind of helped and assisted with getting things back up and going, but, um, mostly I was just super impressed. I watched those board meetings as they navigated those waters with this and tried to make those hard decisions. And, um, I was super impressed that for the most part, Frenchtown got to be back tomorrow and got to continue their education. Um, so I personally, I felt like maybe there's still some area where we can help those students that are struggling just a little bit. Um, but then again, we're up against the same situation where we're short on parents. So we, you know, we're gonna catch twenty-two on that. Um, so I understand why that is lacking at this time.
Well, I came prepared. I have a plan. Only because I was part of this plan, this is, uh, what we call the three-year plan on the horizon. This plan was to adopt, um, a focus on what we're going to do for the next three years in this school. And a bunch of us got together and it was a, it was a long, it was about ten-hour date, uh, putting this together and we brought in somebody and we kept us on track, but here, uh, for example, I'm gonna, we, we had six key points that we focused on. I'll read to you just real quick here, one is educational fidelity and purpose, and purpose. The other one is technology, just as we had spoken about, safety and security. There's, in these things, we talk about strategic, uh, objectives and then action plans and how we're gonna do this. That, uh, a lot of this stuff that we have here, if you go through the board packets, uh, the superintendent will talk about stuff and he has in place some of this stuff, uh, what was accomplished and things that will get accomplished later in the future. Facilities, that's a big one, right? We need a lot of help with facilities. Wellness, um, for, for the kids in the school. But there's a plan, we have a plan and we're, and we're trying our best to deal with this plan. There's obviously a hiccup with, uh, COVID, uh, some of this stuff wasn't able to be implemented at the time, but we're catching up on that. We're in year two of this third plan, uh, of this three-year plan. There will be another plan next year and there will be a session, a big long session in the summertime when we will sit down and we'll discuss, what are we looking to in the future in the next three years? What are we looking to in the next five years? And we know it's gonna grow, we're gonna have to look at, uh, possibly new facility, possibly funding, but overall, what are we gonna do, how are we gonna better serve our, um, kiddos in this, in this school? And that's really what this is focused on, is focusing on a plan and how are we gonna act on that plan? The core values in this community, excellence in education, safety in nurturing our environment here, and personal responsibilities. And we have a vision in this plan for this. So I, I would love to continue to make the next plan next year when this comes around because this community is growing crazy. And we're going to have to put our thinking hats on what it is we're going to have to do to prioritize for this facility and for our kids.
We have some time for one final question, and the question is, tell us about a conflict you have had and how you resolved it.
This is a tough one. I have very many conflicts outside of my children. Nobody wants to hear about that. You know, it's been a long time since I worked for somebody. But dealing with customers, there's a few times that I've had conflicts over a job and it's, it's been merely just miscommunications. One example is a text message was sent to me and I really was not going to deal with the text message because I knew it could make me bad. So I made sure and called my customer and told him we needed to meet face to face so that there was no ill feelings and so that everything could be explained from my side and from his side. That being said, he's still one of my very customers and there was no ill feelings. It was simply misunderstanding. Conflict is not something that I look for, but I always look for a way to resolve it without making it worse, I guess I would say. I like to listen to both sides and get the opinion of who has a conflict with me or who I have a conflict with and come up with some sort of compromise or in the rare occasion, I guess, agree with this group.
I think my life is conflict. I, I mentioned before that I manage fifty type A salespeople and we sell to doctors, I don't know if it was a meta-doctor, but I think they all solve their conflict. So we get into a lot of these all the time. I mean, I, to Rainier's point, right, text message, it's really hard to read somebody's tone and to understand exactly the way they said a specific statement. So I think communication is key. I think understanding your point of view, but then putting yourselves, putting yourself in their, in their shoes and understanding kind of where they're coming from. Usually when when you stay calm, which is sometimes a challenge, it is really. If you stay calm and you have clear communication back and forth and you work through whatever conflict that you have, I think you're able to come to whether it's compromise or some sort of resolution that can create a win-win situation for both parties. I, the one thing that I would add to that is whether it's conflict or confrontation and all these things, I, I I tend to enjoy conflict and confrontation. I tend to enjoy uncomfortable situations. I tend to like to ask questions that make everybody in the room comfortable and I like to talk about those things for a lot of these people in the room. The fact that they're not laughing now is surprising, but so I, I think I, you know, I kind of thrive in that environment and I like being in, in those, you know, tough circumstances. And I think, you know, that's when you get an opportunity to actually like, you know, really learn about, you know, people and, you know, your friends or colleagues or people that you're supporting, whether it's org related, et cetera. I think conflict is a lot, and a lot of that comes from communication.
Thank you so much. Chris?
So conflict, wow, my entire life has been conflict. So I'm not sure where to begin on something like that. Military, police, and then I have a daughter, and so, yeah, that was a key. I think that, you know, I don't have, like I said, my entire life has been conflict. I always questioned police officers that became police officers that hate conflict because what do you think you're doing? I don't know. It's all conflict. And so what I like to do, or at least what I've learned to do over the years, is self-reflect first, find out, you know, ask yourself a hard question. Do you really think you're right? Or do you think you're emotionally attached to this decision? Or could you learn something here and move forward from that perspective? And when it comes down to it, if you're answering those questions right, don't compromise your own values because somebody has a conflict. Stand, stand up for yourself and make yourself heard. Your, your position may be changed by more information, but don't be emotionally attached to it and don't compromise.
Just to leave the question, tell us about a conflict you had and how you resolved it.
Well, I'll be straight up and not much in conflict. I don't enjoy conflict, but that being said, I look at everything pretty level headed. I don't bring a lot of emotion to the table in any kind of situation. I look at what I have to deal with and deal with it. In business, with employees, with clients, economically. There's going to be issues that you have to deal with and that's what I've set on. Go to the best solution and shake hands and move on. So just get the situation dealt with and put it behind you and move on.
So I have to tend to agree again with Rainier here. I am a pre-teenager, so my life is constantly a war zone at times. However, you know, I've learned something over the years. Many of my old teachers here can attest, I used to be a touch of a hide. And I have learned over the years to walk away and cool my jets and look at things from all different angles. And I finally also just kind of discovered that it's not worth the reaction. And that's something my husband has really instilled in me over the years is the reaction's not worth it. So, and you know, back again to my job, I have worked at jobs where there's a lot of conflicts. I was at DirecTV for several years as a technical support and nobody will yell at me more than an old man who can't get his remote to work. So I have, I mean, I learned really quickly how to de-escalate people. And also even in my job now, nobody likes to hear that they owe seventy-two thousand dollars to the IRS that's due by Monday. So I, I have learned a lot over the years about how to engage in those situations, but I've also learned more about myself that I have to remove myself from the situation and collect my thoughts. And then like Rainier said, too, that face-to-face communication because I don't, I don't decipher the text messages the way that maybe they're intended. And I don't think that my text messages can be deciphered that way either. So I really feel like as far as conflict goes, like Matt said, I don't seek them out. I don't like conflict. But I am also, I'm not going to be walked over on, on, on a decision either. So I feel very strongly that as I age, I progress well on that standpoint.
Well, I'll go first. My life is a bunch of decisions as well, being a law person every day and they, well, I called us to be therapists, but we always had to deal with decisions. But what I'm going to tell you is there's decisions you have to make while being on the board. Decisions you like, some you don't like. Some people approve, some people won't approve. And it's going to cause conflict. On both sides of this spectrum, expect it. It's going to cause either problems on the community side, it's going to cause problems on the school faculty side, and maybe even a decision for the students they don't like that either. Let's talk about no self-worth one time. Why do you think that? That'd be a bit conflict. But with that all said, the key part, just like these guys have said, is communication. It's talking one-on-one so that you have an understanding. So there's no intent, there's no attitude. It's working with one another to resolve or to have a better understanding of why something took place. So there isn't anything left behind. That's, that's our opinion, I would never. You just, you have to work through things and you continue moving on and continue on to the next problem and then the next problem and then the next one. Every day there's something going on. Maybe an email or you get a phone call. But communication is key.
And those are all of my questions. I'm going to go ahead and give each candidate one minute to give closing remarks, wrap up any final thoughts, something maybe they didn't get the opportunity to say that they wish they would have. And if you didn't have the opportunity to get the finger because I've only given you one minute, you have to get it now.
Well, I guess a few things I'd like to say is that elected or not elected, this is my town, the girl up here, this is one of the hardest. And I'm going to be involved, whether you're all going to be here or not. I'm going to coach, I'm going to, I'm going to go to lunch with my kids if I can. So this is, this is where I'm at. And I just, I want to do what I can for the community. Reading through what the board is responsible for, what they do, that pitch I'll clear as much as I know. But if you read through that, it's, there's a lot of legal jargon and whatnot in there. But I will learn and do the best that I can for the community. I still have some time, just to wrap up. I have one thing I'd like to say, I hope this is the right place. Congratulations to Rob Basti.
Good chat.
Yeah, I, I would, I guess I'll start with the fact that I had a conversation with Rainier's mom prior to, prior to coming up here where she said that she had, she's never seen a situation where we've had six people up here in the community talking about running for school board in like thirty years. So clearly, this isn't a paid position. So everybody who's up here is, is, is looking at this, that they're going to volunteer their time and they want to make their community better. And I think, you know, worst case scenario, whether elected or not, I think we've had to talk about some things that was important in the community and that we all wanted to make sure that were addressed. I think I've shared my thoughts on, on what matters, you know, to me. I think the most important thing, the lowest coming to non-mayors, is to make sure that we, we focus on the students. That's the number one thing. And the people that work with our students, whether they're teachers, counselors, bus drivers, educators, administrators, et cetera. And that, that's something I'm committed to making sure that my fourth grader and second grader have a better experience in the high school all the way here than they were having today. So thank you so much.
Yeah, we all are up here to be involved. And I was thinking the same thing. I don't think there's ever been six people trying for two positions that are on page that I probably said something about that we want to be involved and that maybe it is time for a change. I think you've got a good idea of who I am. And certainly if you have any questions about how I am going to vote or how I would vote if I were elected or any of my values, I'm available online, text message, in person. Or however you want to communicate with me, I will not ignore any communications. Still, I'm also probably not the most of the worst, et cetera. But what they needed for us, for us to support this community for years, and continue to support it elected or not. And all my, elected, my vote would would be considered as far as looking at kids first, staff, and then as far as the community. And that's what I want, my reason for that.
So I just want to say thank you for everyone that did come out tonight. You know, I committed to running several months back. I actually had put in an application to be in the interim. And I made a promise that night that I would be back. And I just would like to point out that I am dedicated. I have a strong work ethic. And I can't be persuaded to quit ever. So I don't like to lose, but I also just am so impressed with all of the gentlemen sitting up here with me. And very good candidates. I'm actually very impressed. And I just really would like to say one more thing about our kids are the utmost important thing. And you have a voice, use it. As the gentleman down the table said, don't be afraid to reach out, don't be afraid to ask questions. That's what we're here for. Again, thank you for your guys' time tonight.
So I'm going to read some material we've here and some we put in this strategic plan. It's called a district mission. I don't know if anybody's read it, anybody's seen it. But it says, "The core purpose of the Frenchtown Public School is to empower and educate students and nurturing a safe environment so that they discover their strengths, develop a love and appreciation for learning, reach their full potential and prepare for an ever-changing world." I don't know, I also can't explain it. I'm here speaking before you because I am a hundred percent in for the kids. The kids are the number one thing that I look to when making decisions. Am I already being told that? Oh, holy moses. It's, it's the kids, it's staff, it's community, it's this facility. And I appreciate you guys coming out and listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We just want to give a round of applause for the Board of Trustees positions. Let's go ahead and give them another big round of applause. Them applying for the Board of Trustees positions. Let's go ahead and give them another big round of applause. Our thank yous that we mentioned at the beginning, a thank you to the Frenchtown School District, the Frenchtown PTA, Deputy Rasmussen. And don't forget to have ballots mailed in or delivered by Tuesday, May 4th, and then the files go out tomorrow, starting tomorrow. Thank you so much.